Discussion on Main Street Parking. Mr. Culpepper, you're up.
All the fights are already beat out of me. Um.
You can't hold your candles over there.
You'd see that rockily well if parking was lined up better on that side of the road. Um, I just wanted to discuss Main Street Parking. I did meet with the DOT, only talked to them briefly about Main Street Parking. They did say they have no qualms about parallel parking. They said it would be much like Backstreet, which has parallel parking on both sides, or the further end of Main Street near the Motor Company Grove, which has parallel on both sides, but I don't know what the desire of this board is as far as that goes. But I wanted to get an update from our land use administrator and engineer about from the square that way, if we were still thinking about doing parallel parking, the temporary lines that way.
Yes, we will continue that on. We will continue that on all the way up on the right-hand side to do in parallel. The machine that we use to ground up the lines, I borrowed from NC D and D, tried to give it back, so I'm just waiting on it back, and we'll continue that all the way up.
Do we have a timeline on bulb outs as DOT talks to you about when that might happen or if funding's going to go through?
Yeah, we were wanting to have the project pretty well put into place for this kind of winter time, and it would be a spring, so probably a winter leg and then a spring project sometime around中间. Ultimately, the board, we just need to figure out kind of our final layout, what we want so we can move that forward and get the final designs in, and we can present to the board, and we can tweak those. So there is a time factor in when we need to do our final completion of what we want to have Main Street look like eventually.
When do you think that deadline is?
I would like to have by winter time so we could submit. Typically, a project takes anywhere from three to six months to be through the system, bid, and let. So that puts us, you know, mid next year before it is put through their NC D and D system. And there is a funding source, and I would rather tap into that funding source before that went away for us.
Absolutely.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may interject for a moment as well, if this is a desire of the council to look at that and possibly do a trial period like we did on the opposite side, it might behoove us if this is something you want to discuss now and do that as soon as possible. I know I've been in discussions with our engineer and our planner as well. We would need at least about a month leeway because there'll be some design that we can do in-house, but again, you're going to run into where we ran into last winter. If we progress and wait too long, when you get near December months, you're going to have an issue with the tape getting it to stay. So if it is a desire of this board to look at it, maybe let's kind of have some discussion tonight, or even if you're not comfortable tonight, at our continuation meeting to kind of give us some guidance, because it would be something to move on sooner rather than later.
You're saying maybe try the parallel parking on that side?
You could do a trial period like we did last time.
I want to add, just where Planting Board has been reviewing Chapter 75, I know that our wardens, and it's the parking schedules in town, and we've been reviewing it the past two months and are still currently reviewing it, except we'll have a planned having meeting one after hours at Planting Board meeting, so merchants and residents can kind of speak on it as well.
Is that something y'all can do pretty easy? Tape it down and check it out and see how it goes and play with layouts?
It'd be very similar to what we did on this section up here. Longly reservation of the board, we saw this, that the 90 days was a long period to keep that out there. I would probably suggest a shorter time period to keep that out.
Anybody have a penchant to try this?
I would like to get it done on the north side first. That could be the third leg of it. I just am not certain that. I think we got less blowback this time because we still had some on the other side, and I'm not real sure, although we've got to try to find out.
We all thought it would go the other way with this side, too, and they like it. But I'm just worried we're going to run out of time. The DOT funding is only there for a certain amount of time to do the bulb outs, and we need to have our layout set by then.
Yeah, definitely. We want to have a good firm because once that process gets in, it'll be pretty well finalized, what will be there soon.
How much money are we talking about maybe tapping into these bulb outs?
I believe that we, the funding source is going to pay for basically everything of the bulb out sections that will be a DOT project.
And about how much is that? Hundred or thousand or 10,000?
We'll probably be, off the top of my head, maybe in the right at $100,000 range.
But I wouldn't do all the work, and I mean, this would be the time.
And when's this deadline?
I would, they were typically, they wanted to get the project in for a winter time development, and then it would be a spring let. So we've got a couple months of leeway in there, but I would like to have everything finalized at least by January timeframe.
And if I'm not mistaken, we're actually going to have planters where we can have landscaping in these bulb outs, right? So we'll actually have greenery on Main Street.
Yep. We'll be right around the crosswalks and handicap spots. You have your buffer zones to lead up so you have that side distance, whether you have planting or a tree or flower or whatever.
And where your city posts are now, that's kind of the feel of when we all started looking at this, where your bulb outs would be, is where you see those city posts.
Okay. You got any more to talk about?
I mean, I'll make a motion that we try it on the south side with tape.
A second.
Just going to specify a time period. What's with it? The more you've got, you've got to comment.
Yeah, I think with try, do we just want to do the section that we had tried before?
To mirror the outside?
Is that to get a section where y'all would like to try?
Because we don't need to try the continuation on the north side, right? And we pretty much know how that's going to go. The only thing we really need to decide is if the south side's going to stay diagonal or if it's going to go to parallel.
Correct.
So I make a motion that...
We already voted on that north side all the way down.
The north side's been voted on.
Yeah, it's done. No, I was here, that was two meetings ago.
Without trying to pile too much on something that, if you're going to be a parallel on the right north side all the way, and then you're going to just go up to the Phillips Street to the traffic light on the south side, then that's going to leave just four or five spaces, might as well be, might as well be parallel on both sides all the way.
I'm fine with that.
I mean, that would, it wouldn't make sense to pinch a road in there.
Well, I think from the historical society on, it already is.
It may be, but there's three or four before you get there.
In front of making a...
I mean, I would hate to not have access. You say that this funding could dry up?
Yeah, it's always a possibility.
Imagine that. You know, I would certainly not want to lose the opportunity to access funding for bulb outs, something that we're really interested in.
But if you do a trial, would you still pass the funding if you're in a trial or not?
I think on a shorter time span, we should be fine. If we were going to say, if we're going to keep it out there, that three months like we previously did, one, that would put us into a winter time environment, which is not good, and two, that's going to push out the times that it takes to develop and the time for that as well.
And what about the Planting Board, having a meeting to have the public? I mean, are we jumping ahead if we did this?
One, that the Planting Board has found, when we was going through the old text, it said, you know, it was going to be 45-degree angle parking with this on both sides, which when we made the change, that was something we had to change. So we make this change, they just have to redo that text. They can have those, to still have that meeting, that could be when the public come and give their comments about it, use it as well.
Speaking of your public comment, this has come up several times with the merchants. What do you think the feeling is of the merchants about parallel parking on the site of your business?
I think on the northern side?
No, the side across the street here.
Right. On the bottom street, have not heard any negativity at all. My biggest concern was just like even yesterday, is that the speed of people coming up the hill, and there was this little lady trying to park, parallel park, and someone comes up behind her, stops and starts blowing the horn. So she was frustrated, and you could tell the frustration on her face, so she sped off and left and went down the street. And it bothered me just a little bit knowing that some merchant has lost out. But then I saw the little old lady circle back on hand, she was determined, and then there was another one that was a little bit bigger, and nobody was behind her. I can't tell you how on my side of the street, while all the merchants would say you're But I think they're happy with the way it is right now. But I, we've all been open to whatever, just as long as we sort of kind of know what's going on. The parking on Main Street is not merchants' parking on Main Street, which is another issue I know. But I just wanted to be conducive for the merchants that come downtown, or come to the merchants downtown, our community that shops, and to be able to have a place to park and feel safe. And I think they would be open as long as they know what's going on.
We'll keep you posted, I guarantee you. Let me ask Mr. Moore one thing. Have you looked at how many spaces we lose with parallel parking on the south side?
Yeah, we went out and looked today, and it's going to very similar, mirror the side that we currently have in parallel. It's almost a direct match, side to side.
Would 60 days be enough, or is that too long, too short?
I'll let that be at the discretion of the board. Just keep in mind, we are getting into colder environments here very soon, so, you know...
We've also got our major festivals coming up.
And that is another concern to think about.
And in the last bit span of 90 days, we put the tape down about 30 days in, they had to go back and put more tape down where it was coming up, and then by the time we got to the 90 days, everybody saw how it was looking, and it was a little more I hadn't done it. So 60 days, if you went 60, you'd have to probably put it, fix it somewhere at least once.
I'll amend my motion to try with tape, temporary parallel parking on the south side for 30 to 60 days at your discretion.
You just have the entire length of it.
Sure.
Your motion is, I'll second it. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Five and one.
And, Mr. Mayor and Council, I may ask one final question. Is it the will of the board if we went ahead and started working on that sooner rather than later?
Yeah. We came around the pumpkin fest.
Right. I'll notify council when we get ready to make the changes, though.
Are the next to press. Discussion on Letter of Support for Women's History Trail, Mr. Crane.
I gave you some other goodies, including a picture of the design locket for the sculpture that we are envisioning. John, I didn't know that.
That's okay.
And I also gave you a copy of the question release from Z Smith Rentals, inclusive Public Art Initiative. This seems to match exactly what we are envisioning with the sculpture there, offering $10,000, $50,000 grants for public art that is inclusive, that is, that it includes minority groups, ethnic groups, and then underrepresented groups in our society. And I gave you a sheet from, I think it was National Geographic that did this study, that is really, you can see how in the last, I think this was 2016, or 2017 to March 2018 that year, how many statues were built in the United States, and how few of them had any women in them. I mean, it's like women don't even exist in public art in this country, so that's what we're trying to change. And what I'm asking you to do is to give our town manager approval to write a letter of support for our grant initiative, to do October the 8th, and they do want letters of support to be included. So I thought one coming from the town would be really excellent.
Looks like there are more of animals, real or imagined, than there are of women.
No. That's sort of sad. But we want to change that, and I think this sculpture is the sort of thing that if it all comes about like we envision, I mean, people come from all over the world to see it. I think it's going to be that kind of a piece. It'll really have its impact on East Springfield.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion that the town manager be authorized to send a letter of support?
I'll add you.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Discussion on Read to Me Story Walk at Memorial Park, town manager.
I, Mr. Mayor and Council, what you have before you tonight, we had discussed it when, hopefully, two, maybe three months ago, the possibility of looking at a story walk at Memorial Park. We've looked at, myself and land use administrator, along with our rec liaison, about the possibility of placement there. So with that, Mr. Collins, would you like to kind of what we discussed and looked at?
I just sensed that we felt like it may be a little bit too much for a limited space that we have there, and that's maybe just a judgment call, it's certainly a nice offer to make. I certainly would like any of the group who have thought about it and would like to chime in, yea or nay, you know, what I, support me or not, I want to hear, you know, from you all, because it is a nice gesture, and it could really work out. It just seems like a little much.
Josh. Frank up the computer for me, please. I have, I've spent a lot of time out there doing some measuring and what have you, taking photographs, and in a nutshell, I think if we were to do this, this would be a safety hazard, and I'm going to show you why. And if after discussing it, and we do this, and a child is hurt because of the placement of these, I think that the town's going to be in a bad position. I measured these, and 12 to 15 of these would take almost all of the walking path if we put them 30 or 40 feet apart like we are. They're very, they would be very close to where children play, and as you all know, with children, you can't corral them. They're like herding cats, they go and they put you away. It does not fit into the overall design that Main Spring, I think, and the town wanted to have at that site and that. So another thing that would be, and let's just take a look here. This is the Rotary Park near the Tasty Shelter, and as you can see, in the lower right-hand corner, if a child were to run into that, that is an awful sharp, sharp point, and that is not a flexible thing. That is bolted down to plywood. You can't mow around them, you have to weedie around them. The story walk near the Big Bear Shelter, as you can see, they're spread out quite some distance, but the thing of it is, is that's not areas where children are running and just playing and having a good time like children do. But my concern is, those are on 4x4 or 5x5, they're poles that don't give. Now, we have a total of 11 tenths of a mile, and if we put those at 33 feet apart, and there were 13 pages, that would take up a tenth of a mile. So it would basically take up all of that area that we have. Now, you will notice the picnic shelter in the upper middle corner. So that is the area that children use so much for soccer, touch football, flag football. It's just an area where kids can go and play. And if you'll notice, if we put them around this walking mark, if a child came swinging out of that swing and went to running and ran into one of these, we got a serious problem. Now, it's also, where we would be putting those along the walking trail would be very close to the basketball court, and you know how basketball players are about going out of bounds. So we only have really about .20 of walking trails, and whichever place we put these, if we do the desired distance apart, we're basically losing almost all of that particular trail. So I would make a motion, not a motion, but I would entertain a motion, that we not put the story walk, but that we allow them to have like a small free library or something else that would be educational. I am really worried about, and some of y'all have young children, running into one of these things, they don't give, and there would be so many of them. And what makes us different than the Greenway and Park of Meadows where there's one, is those are along walking paths and not where children just run wild, have a good time. Yes, Dave?
Bob, I think you made some good points about them being on the 4x4s, but I wonder, we have a really nice fence fencing off the whole creek. If we couldn't use existing fence posts and mount them to the fence post and make an attractive walk around the creek reading the story on the fence post?
But do we do away with the, what we're trying to achieve with the natural environment of the creek?
I mean, I don't, I don't think getting kids to read a story is going to inhibit their...
They've got three other places they could read stories.
You're not wrong, but I don't think it could hurt for them to be on the fence post and read a story.
We put a lot of money into that fence, and we've got two ugly entities, Duke, Main Spring, the town, who else, Mr. Collins? There's another group that was involved in this. Go ahead, I'm following you.
Oh, okay. Diane?
Yes?
You're sensing that this may be a little much, but you're also sensing that we would like the idea of having something there. Could there be a plan B that might, could get some thought and presented to us that we would be a little less, little less, but...
We can do that.
Why don't we give her the opportunity to do that?
No problem. Yeah. And Diane, I hope you realize that I'm a big backer of it, but I'm worried too about those children running into one of these things, or me. So anyhow, we'll come back, and we will really work with you on what that alternative might be, because, you know, you would be absolutely amazed what this little free library gets out here. It is amazing, and we would do something like that with you.
I wonder if we couldn't tie the nature of it with a story, a story about nature?
We have that already down here. You read the interpretive sign?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I agree, but I mean, I'm not a five-year-old learning to read that could walk up to a sign and recognize my sight words and say, hey, Mom and Dad, I see my sight words on this sign. And then they can go to the free library that's adjacent and check out a book and the whole community benefits.
We'll work, we'll work with you. And Mr. Collins would be more than glad, I'm sure, to work with you on that. Okay, delegation of the voting delegate for the North Carolina League Municipalities Conference. This comes up every year, and I have asked Mr. Culpepper if he would be willing to take this duty on, but I need to ask the board if y'all would approve Mr. Culpepper to be our voting delegate at the North Carolina League of Municipalities.
Totally.
And this is the conference. You've done it, so you know. It's not punishment, Mr. Culpepper. I assure you, it's not punishment.
It must not be good if y'all recommended me to do this.
Go there and when you get there. Okay. All in favor of Mr. Culpepper? Mr. Hennig, I think I need you to do that.
I have no opinions about that.
Okay. Can we have a street closing request for Central Communitario?
Mr. Mayor and Council, what you have before you tonight as well is a street closing request to close Iowa Street on Friday, September the 14th, from 5:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. for the debt.
I'll entertain a motion to close Iowa Street Friday, September the 14th, from 5:30 till 11:30. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Okay. And instantly, I'm not sure that's going to go to 11:30, but gives them a cushion in case it does. Okay, we have a fire department budget amendment?
Mr. Mayor and Council, what we're asking tonight after discussion with Chief Rohr, myself, and Finance Officer Kyra Doster, what we would like to present to the council is just to get permission from this board to apply for a grant to continue to replace the existing breathing apparatus that we currently have. Around two years ago, we received a grant. This new grant that's going to be opening in a couple weeks, if we would have the opportunity and the blessing of the council to apply for it, this would finish out the remainder of the breathing apparatus rusting. Of course, if we apply and are awarded the grant, we would bring that back to council. This is just, we're just asking tonight for council's permission to move forward and at least apply for the grant in upcoming weeks. Is that correct, Chief Rohr?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. All right, I'll take that motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second?
A second.
Second? Okay, all in, no further discussion, all in favor.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Why would we have to approve something like that going after a grant? You know what I mean? I'm just curious.
The reason is, it's on the agenda. We haven't adopted a consent agenda yet. But I agree with you.
Give us advice and guidance.
I agree with you. We need a consent agenda, and sometimes I wonder if we don't need them for resolutions as well, but some of them get quite lengthy. Okay, that takes care of all of the listed business, and now a discussion on Town and Franklin Comprehensive Plan. Mr. Hennig, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to keep, I don't think we're asking the council for any action on this tonight. I just want to keep in front of you the need for consideration of a comprehensive town plan. We've presented you some of the proposals we got some months ago, and it's been a while now, so I have to reach out and make sure they're still valid. There, as I've told you several times, are strong legal reasons to have a comprehensive land use plan, one of which is, and I should have at least, we have a discussion about sidewalks. What some municipalities have done, lanes will bend and theirs, is that they had as part of their comprehensive land use plan, an identification of a core area that is for sidewalks, a pedestrian plan, which I know Justin had worked on, at least a bicycle. Is that also pedestrian plan?
There's a bike in it.
So, you know, if we got that included in your comprehensive land use plan, if it's possible to go back and say, okay, we're going to lessen, we're going to intensify restrictions here where we need it for walking and remove it elsewhere. You know what I mean? So that's another area in which having a comprehensive land use plan would be a good progressive thing to have. What's the, tell me what questions you have about that at this point. Again, the range of proposals you have in front of you goes from $55,000-ish dollars up to $98,500. There were four of them, two from there. We think at least, there's one that we would recommend to you that's not the highest on the list, based on some experience from some neighbors. Are you all ready to look at a plan that would have you spending roughly half of that money in this fiscal year and half in the next, and get that process underway? Everybody familiar with what it is still, or want to talk about what the need for it, or tell me what you think on that?
What is the expected lifespan of a comprehensive plan?
So I would think they want to look at at least 10 years down the line. I think you could probably, I don't know, Justin, did you get a sense from them exactly?
10 is about your average.
I think 10 is probably...
Is it something, if we wanted to, 10 years from now, if we already had it in place, you can hire the same firm or a similar firm to just update your comprehensive plan?
Yes, yes.
Expense working is...
I think this is your big expense to get over the hurdle of having a bound, you know, truly comprehensive plan.
That's got to be a pretty intensive, long process for something to cost that much money.
Yeah, so what we put in the request proposal and what we think is roughly what's needed, and this, we didn't just make this out of whole cloth, it's what other, you know, municipalities have found they needed to get this thing done, is something like, it puts a lot on your planning board at first. They, you're, I think you start off with a consultant who comes and gets familiar with the community, looks at the land use mapping and everything we've had so far, the principles of road and so forth, and gives, it gives some thought to what does a plan sort of look like? There's some neighborhood, you know, neighborhood charrettes, townwide charrettes and things like that. like that to get people here and given their thoughts about how they see the various neighborhoods in the town progressing. They may want to split that up and sort of attack it in various zones. And Justin, do you have any other thoughts about that? I think we said we wanted to have a minimum of two charrettes.
Yeah, at least two, maybe three.
What is a charrette? Sorry for my ignorance.
It's-
Public hearing.
It's basically, yeah, it's basically an informal public hearing. We did them when the UDO was passed and it was, I think-
Not visually.
Yeah.
Conventional, we did it sort of like a place plan when we had up at the-
Sanctuary.
Yeah, the Presbyterian up there, we had invited the public and it was like a couple of hours and get input.
Then we would look for landmarks along the way that they're going to bring for, to the planning board, sections to say, okay, planning board, now you pass along to the town, you know, what you say to the town council, what you think of a section, start to get them built into place and then approve it finally as a final product. I think once we have one of these firms engaged, we would get them to get you a timeline and a proposal of where, you know, what their expected process.
Every firm that I've talked to, they were all nine months to a year process. That's why I was stretching over a couple of budgets was probably useful and not just one big lump sum. And it helps break it up. They were all, everyone I spoke with, they were all fine with that, so.
We did reach out as well, if I may, to Region A to see if there's any type of assistance there, whether that be financial or anyone on staff that could help us. And from Sarah Thompson, who's the director of Region A, she advised us, anything dealing with zoning, we would, it would behoove the town to look at hiring a consultant. We've reached out to several Western North Carolina managers, kind of similar process they went through. So something just for the board to consider. This isn't something we budgeted that is a significant amount. So it is something, if you were interested in moving forward with it, we could start that process, what that would look like. It would be an item out of your contingency fund or if the board's temperature is more inept to wait to our budgeting process, which believe it or not, it'll be here sooner rather than later, this is something we can build in the budget. I think this is just something that, there's been so many incidences, like for instance, this short preservation, there, what to do with some land development that's currently going on in town. How does that fit into this piece? And it may behoove the Town of Franklin to have this type of plan.
And I'm telling you, from a legal standpoint for land use, it's important. And we, we've had enough to get by legally, but it would be helpful to have a fully realized plan.
You going to be here on the 24th?
Yes.
Maybe we could continue with a little bit of discussion then, too.
Sure, absolutely.
Do we know of a town, Silva, Bryson City, that has one of these comprehensive plans that we could read through theirs?
Yes, if the council were a member, it's been maybe three or four weeks ago, I emailed you a link. Laurel Park has a very well-done comprehensive plan. So that would be one to look at. There's been some other Western North Carolina counties, they started it, but unfortunately the consultant didn't pan out. But the link that I shared, and I'll be glad to share it again, that's a good foundation. It's like over 300 pages, but I'll send it to you.
And the comp plan would take something like the bike and pad plan that's already done and not reinvent that wheel?
Correct.
Work the good parts of that into it. Tell us where we should look for sidewalks in the future, where we do want a pedestrian-friendly area.
Right, right. And those are, you know, those are good plans. This would work it into the whole community and say, not only where do we want a plan for biking and pedestrians, but why does it fit into the neighborhoods that it's working into as well?
The information in the comp plan specifically, as an example sidewalks, does that help us when we're talking to the DOT in the future and saying, in our comp plan, this intersection by the Old Ingles was recognized as a section that really needs a little bit of love?
Yes, you've had a thorough fair plan, but I don't know the last time that you really looked at it. It's a- That kind of thing would, yes, would, yes, it's another big thing.
And the bike plan, all of those projects and like the bike plan, there's each individual project, being there in a plan that goes through the prioritization project with DOT and Region A, that's how, if a project's ranked, then it scores better.
Okay, any further on that?
So we're going to talk about it more the 24th or you want us to?
Anyway, those are all available, are they not? All of these studies are available. Come avail yourself in study. Let's see what they contain.
Do you-
And a lot of this is online. Just go to the North Island League of Municipalities. You'll find studies like this everywhere.
Do we reach out and make sure each plan still acts before that meeting?
Please.
So we have that update.
And see if you can get it to them before the meeting.
Yeah.
If you would, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Doing a good job, I want you to know that.
Thank you.
All of the town employees are doing a good job. Thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay. All right, I guess we're down to the delegation of authority regarding town policies.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and as we discussed at your last continuation meeting, I have drafted a resolution for you here that sort of encapsulates parts of things that have already been delegated to the manager. I don't know whether you want to take this, and I just gave it to you tonight, take some time to consider it. Just to briefly run through the things that are here, A, contracts, delegate authority to enter into contracts of less than $30,000 or less. The number there, that's the cutoff for informal bidding. That is the authority that in some of my school system clients, they have given to the superintendent to engage in contracts of less than I know. And I would tell you that I don't think it's typically used without heavy consultation, especially where the manager feels like she needs it. Property management, this is along the lines of the discussion that we had at your last meeting. Policies as well, we talked about that. The tax releases, the D there, you have already in fact allocated the authority to the manager to release amounts less than $100, but this would be, again, a place to collect things up. E, closed session minutes, this is something you might want to just think about. It's been a topic at times in the past about what process do we have to go back through closed session minutes and make them public when they no longer need to be closed? Also, what, how are they getting approved? Getting this to put a process in place to actually, you know, say what your process is. And I think based on what we've just talked about, we might want to add application for grant funds.
For grants, well, I was thinking that's not in there.
So, you know, again, it's at your pleasure and it's a, it's a policy, this can be changed as the will of council, but this is what I suggest you start with for consideration of how to enumerate the things you're asking your manager to do that aren't necessarily nailed down in law.
John, I think that in the closed meeting, that the law is pretty clear that once the reason for the secrecy is over, it's public record.
Yes, sir. It's just, in many years, we were at the Old Town Hall last time, we talked about whether, how to determine that. This would say to managers, you know, to review them periodically and when the purpose is not frustrated anymore, make them public.
Yeah, exactly, yes. I think it goes along with our trying to be transparent and everything.
And any questions you have and have to entertain or-
You need a motion on this or just a discussion?
I would say, it's up to the council, if you're ready to adopt it tonight. I just told you a section I think you ought to add, so I don't know if you want to see that added and maybe give it a little more thought. I could bring you a revised version. There's no urgency on this either. I mean, this is all things that have been, we have worked through in the past. It's just, it's things like the grant funds, she could have had that in the mail two weeks ago probably instead of, you know, waiting. So it's not absolutely dire to do it tonight. Let's, I would suggest you hold off.
Okay.
Let me add that section. Let me know if any of you have something else you think the council might want to see the manager just take care of and will add.
We'll just add it to the agenda?
Yes.
All right, a couple of announcements.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, and the mention of transparency, I think it's important to me to say this. There was some misinformation stated earlier that makes it sound as though this project via economic development grant has been done and it's been, its property has been given away and that this thing got done without any kind of public input. And again, that's not the case. The grant process requires, and this is true of any grant process that involves State of North Carolina, they require that the state be the ones to announce it first and they will just turn it over. It would never happen if they start coming out in public before and are announced by the entities that are supporting them before they are final. As to property in particular, we're required by law, we're following this process to run publications that talk about what property it is that's involved. That will be known before you all make a decision about it. It will come back in front of, it will be made public and it will come back before you after a public hearing. So I just want to clarify that. Is there any questions you've got? Just not the case that it's all done in closed doors. It's not true.
So we don't need to schedule a public hearing about that anytime soon?
We did. The resolution that you passed about it scheduled a public hearing for your October meeting and already instructed us to put the public notices into the press.
After that public hearing, immediately after, are we going to be voting on something?
You will be asked to vote on whether to make a grant of this specific property. And again, it will be made specific before you get back to this table to make that decision.
But not before the public hearing?
Not before the public hearing, correct. Not for that.
So it'll be an hour or so?
No, I'm sorry, what, not before the public hearing?
The entities involved won't be known before the public hearing? Property involved?
As a, you're essentially a grant sponsor with the state of North Carolina for that process and that you, this town is required to not reveal who the grant fund is made, the grant is made to until the state does.
I guess my question is, at what point will the people we represent understand what's going on?
Well, we're working closely with the EDC about that to make it clear as soon as it possibly legally can be.
Will that be before the public hearing?
No.
How can it be a valid public hearing if the public doesn't know what's happening?
Because the state's been, it will be, it's a valid public hearing because you are making clear what property and the purpose that it's dedicated to.
How can people be prepared to talk at the public hearing if they don't know what's happening?
They will know what's happening.
What won't they know?
The specific grantee of the grant.
Yeah. The location, that'd be-
And that's, and I'm sorry, that's the law.
So they will know the location?
Yes.
They just won't know who the applicant is?
Correct.
All right.
Before the public hearing, that will be public knowledge?
Correct.
If you don't give anything further, let's move on because I think we're-
This is not an unimportant issue, though.
No, it's not an unimportant issue.
I just, I want people to know when they're going to know so they can be prepared to give us proper feedback.
Right. And listen, I am all for making everything as transparent as it legally can be and we're doing it.
I don't think we're the ones writing the rules. Not at all. Okay, let's get on with the announcements. We've got a family movie night this Friday night. Movie will be Paddington 2. Does anyone want to give us a review of Paddington 2? I'm not sure I know.
It's awesome.
Retirement party for Public Works, J. Director, Public Works Director J. Gibson, Friday, September the 14th, from 2 to 4, and I'm assuming that will be in this room.
Yes, sir.
And we owe J. a whole lot of thanks for a lot of cold nights, snowy days, when nobody else wanted to come out, our town proves where they are. And I don't think people realize just what they do go through. So we owe J. a pile of thanks. We have a special called council meeting, which we've been talking about.
I think that would be a continuation meeting since we're adding, yeah. We would just recess tonight and go to continuation.
It'll be Monday, September the 24th at 5:30. We have a joint meeting with the Town of Hollins in Lakin County Tuesday, September the 25th at the Spring House in Hollins. And Hollins is the host this time. We've been trying to get this together for some time now. We try to do this three times a year.
What time is that joint meeting?
It's at 5, it's at 6:30. Those people eat late up there in Hollins.
Got to give us time to get there.
Yeah. Okay, you want me to make that announcement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, we may, what you have before you, and we'd like to give this to the news media as well, it is, you know, a sadness that you have an employee who retires in public service after 35 years with one municipality. And Mayor Scott's absolutely correct. I'm sure there's been many sleepless nights that Mr. Gibson had. However, with that announcement also comes a promotion tonight that we'd like to make the council aware, and it's with great privilege that I'd like to announce to the council and the public tonight that Mr. Nathaniel Moore will continue to serve dual roles as our town engineer and his new role as our public works director effective today.
Very good. Okay, after otherwise uneventful meeting tonight, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do you want to go around the table?
All right, let's go around, I'm sorry. I seem to get things constantly wrong. Okay, Mrs. Kinsey?
Nothing bad.
I wish you'd do something about this heat, Bob.
What heat?
Too hot.
You know where the thermostat is?
Not in the room, in the, in the world.
I can't do anything about the room.
It should be 50 degrees outside of.
Okay. All right, since I've been corrected, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To recess to?
To recess, not adjourn, recess at 5:30.
I'll be here.
Okay.
Make a bunch of-
All right, all in favor. Wear something.